I plan to be to consider the life of the non-educations of America and consider the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Carrasi, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Amundts, Mrs. Buckley.
Here.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mrs. Cook.
Here.
Mrs. Dobus.
Here.
Mr. Means.
Present.
Mrs. Rule.
Here.
Mr. Spicuzza. Mr. Workmeister.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. We have a presentation this evening on a review of All Learners Grow.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Mrs. Wells and Mrs. Sutton and I are here this evening to talk a little bit about our review of our goals last year, where All Learners Grow, in which we focused on three major categories. Our LRE, which Miss Sutton will talk a little bit about, we also focused on common assessments and how we instruct in the classroom and using common assessments to drive instruction. And we also focused a little bit on STEAM and how we use differentiated instruction in our classroom to grow our students. The first part of our presentation is a review of our achievement data that was just recently released by the Pennsylvania Department of Ed. So we're going to start with our PSSA data. Maybe we are, maybe we aren't. Can I have that mouse buzz? Thanks. Wasn't on. No. There we go. So when we look at the PSSA data, the first slide that we're going to be looking at is the science achievement. Now it's going on its own. Sorry. I didn't put animation in, but maybe animation was put in. So when we look at the reading achievement data over time, this particular slide begins with the data from early on in 2000, 2002, and goes on to 2016, 17 here. So we have, the blue line is the proficient, green is advanced, yellow is basic, and the red is the below-basic students on the PSSAs. This area right here, this line here where you see a change, is when the assessment changed and the core standards came out for the Department of Pennsylvania. That particular anomaly is consistent across the state as far as the scoring is concerned, and Bethel Park falls right in that. I think in this particular graph, one notable thing is, as you can see, that our below-basic student numbers are declining, which is important, and are advanced in these years since the core standards, our advanced students continue, are continuing to rise. So, and that's with our reading achievement, PSSAs. So that's third grade through eighth grade.
Ms. O'Rourke.
Mm-hmm.
Just to make things clear, that same type of drop that we're seeing in this graph is present in all the other local school districts, correct?
That's correct. It's a phenomenon across the state, Mr. Means. And also, you'll see that drop as well in math. Now, I can't, I don't have the data, but I could definitely get that for you as far as the significance of that drop and where it happens, but across our local area. But it is a phenomenon that happened across the state. And once again, that is the same phenomenon that you'll see here in the data from the beginning of when they started collecting data with the PSSAs, where we, and when they changed the assessment. Once again, our advanced numbers are rising and going in the right direction, proficient, basic, below-basic, and advanced.
Is there any idea why it just happens with the proficient?
Why the proficient what?
That that drop only happens in the green line.
It's actually the advanced. It's actually the advanced.
Green is the advanced line?
Correct. And I could make some speculation about that. I think, I think the rigor of the assessment, I think the multi-step questioning that's in the assessment right now is a learning curve for some of our kids, that it takes a little bit of time to learn that. And I think that we'll see a trend that will continue to improve as we go through, just because of the change in the types of the questions and the rigor of those questions, that we'll see that increase as we go through. But that would be my interpretation of that. And then the science, and how we've fared. In science, science is only assessed in fourth, eighth, and biology. So it is not assessed in all of the grades, three through eight, like the math and ELA is. So this is only fourth grade and eighth grade, which you're seeing there over that same span of time.
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
When you change the testing, the whole test, it's not fair to compare one year to another year. That would be similar to taking a guy that moves from the minor leagues in baseball and saying, well, his batting average dropped because he went into the majors. It's a completely different test. And that's one of the things that makes it hard to track from year to year, because when they changed that test, everything changed.
Absolutely.
It changed the whole grading systems, so to speak.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I think that that's why you, you know, like, when we do these types of presentations, I always say, this is one piece of all that we do in our school system. And Ms. Wells and Ms. Sutton will talk a little bit about what, you know, the impact that across the board of all of the, some of the other things that we do in our school system to empower our kids. And this is just one small piece. I mean, today I was down at a STEAM showcase with our kids presenting, and couldn't been prouder, and standing there, and our kids were the ones that were being interviewed by a local newspaper at the time, because they present themselves well in what they're presenting and the activities that they're doing. That's what we really want to do. We want this also, don't get me wrong, but it's really the education of the entire child. We want the best for them. And, you know, when I present these things, I think it's important for us to look in comparison to what the state is doing, and look in comparison to what, like, school districts are doing, and always want to improve what we're doing and do a better job. But I feel very confident that the education that Bethel Park offers our students is second to none. If they make the right choices in their program and what they want to do, they have the foundation to do whatever they want to do next. And I think that that's what's most important, and to improve upon that all the time. And you're correct, Mr. Means, that the test was changed and that, in fact, moved the cheese and changed the game. So you can't, you can't look back and say, well, look how good they were doing, and then they, you know, that graph shows that they went really poorly. It was a complete and totally different test. It was a multiple guess test that went to a multiple point question, that kids had to do multiple things in one question, that the brain sometimes doesn't work that way for a third grader or a fourth grader. So in that, when we compare ourselves, and I think this is where I lay a little bit more, because I want us, where we stand with our state. Where do we stand in Pennsylvania? Pennsylvania is an educated state. It's a high-performing state in the United States. So when we compare ourselves to the state average and what the state is accomplishing, we're about 20 percentage points above the state average across the board for all of the academic areas that were assessed on the PSSAs. And this is just the PSSAs. Now we'll get into the keystones. The data that I chose to share with you with the keystones, the keystones are a little peculiar, and I think that, to give some foundation, the keystones are an end-of-course assessment on certain courses. It's biology, Algebra I, and literature. And the course that we have identified as our keystone course in Bethel Park is 10th grade English. In that, students take the assessment at the end of that course, but if they don't do well, they can take it multiple times. So when you look at data in different data sets, you can have multiple times in which you take the test. So as I was exploring this, I wanted to get a good idea, to give a good sense of where Bethel Park stands. So in 11th grade is where, that is where the data counts for the school district as far as the SPP is concerned. And basically, if you're in algebra in seventh or eighth grade, your assessment data gets banked, and then it is used for you, you know, for the district when you're in 11th grade. So I chose to take the data for 11th grade for those assessment years. So that is the only, that is what is showing here in that. It is not everybody that took the test of all of those years, it's the 11th grade during those years and where we were standing. So in those years, as you can see, in the bottom row is the state average for 2017, and then the one above it is Bethel Park's scores. And as you can see, once again, we're well above the average in the literature, keystone literature for the state. Once again, as you can see, we're not by any means done with the work that we need to do. We have work that we need to do across the board, and we're going to continue to make progress as we go forward.
I thought that we didn't have keystones last year.
We sure did have keystones, yes.
The state had keystones?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it was confusing, and I know that there was some questions around that were confusing. The governor had put a hold on the keystones as far as a requirement for graduation, but not for accountability, and not for the federal accountability piece. So we still had to take them. For Bethel Park's graduation requirements, we still, you still had to take the keystones. So there was no delay in taking of the keystones. The only thing that the governor did was really confuse a lot of people in the process, because he said that you didn't need to use the keystones for graduation, but Bethel Park was still held accountable for them. They still, and this is why I thought it was, and I still believe, that it's important for kids to realize how important it is, and still to keep it as part of our graduation requirements, is it's still mandated that the keystones are on the child's transcripts. The only thing that the governor did was say that it didn't need to be used as a graduation requirement, the local school districts could decide that. Well, if you're going to have to carry it on your transcript, and the school district is going to need to be responsible for it, then really, that really was not really a leave. Do you know what I mean? That really, that was not, that was a misnomer. It was to take care of maybe some political things that might have been going on at the time, but, you know, it was really holding the kids still accountable, because it was going to be on their transcripts, and it was still holding the school districts accountable, because it is a part of our SPP, so.
And they have to achieve basic, or do they have to achieve proficient?
They have to choose to achieve proficient. Now, in our graduation policy, that, the way the policy reads, it's the proficient over time, sorry, thanks, Beth.
They have to score proficient to graduate?
They do.
Okay.
Now, once again, in the state, the state has said that until 2019, the way our graduation requirements read is they have to score proficient on the keystone, they have to participate in our remediation program, they retest, if they score proficient on the keystone, they redo the remediation program, or they go into project-based assessments. So there's another avenue, it's just not on that test in and of itself. The way the law read is that it was just on that test. And I think when we presented that years ago, when we talked about that policy, there was concern, and I think, I see it in your eyes still, Mr. Means, there's concern about making graduation just about that particular test in and of itself, that there should be other ways in which to meet the requirement. But the state had made it just that test, so. We, in Bethel Park, our policy has a couple pathways that we can get there for graduation. But you have to go through the steps to get there. If I'm a spoke holler, because I don't want publicly to be misspeaking. Algebra. So when we have algebra. What happened to my? My state's, that was literature? Okay. Algebra. So when we, once again, these are the scores from 2013 all the way through, and once again, we are above as far as the percentage of students proficient and advanced in Bethel Park versus those students that are proficient, the percentage of students that are proficient and advanced in the state of Pennsylvania, we are well above that particular percentage. We have work to do as far as mathematics is concerned. Algebra is a concern, that it has been a concern that we continue to work on.
You back up on the advanced. It looks.
Sure.
How do you explain that wide margin? We can go from 43%, 20%, 15%, up to 27, down to 19%. How do you explain that wide variation?
So, one thing you have to remember when you're looking at this data is, each one of these groups in the keystone algebra, kids are taking them at different levels. Is this, are you also saying that, well, whether you banked them for 11th grade and that's where you got the data or not, what we're saying is, is there are different students who took these in different years. So that's one reason why. In other words, I believe what you're saying is, are these the 11th grade scores that are banked, right?
Correct.
So that means there's even, some students would bank their scores from seventh grade, because that's when they take algebra, in eighth grade, and some might not take it till ninth, and maybe even 10. But they bank, and then at the end, that's their cohort. So what that's looking at is, much like anything else, you're not comparing apples to apples in a sense, because these are different students in each year. So even though you're housing, according to Mr. O'Rourke's data, you're housing this data from seventh and eighth grade, this is looking at all the 11th grades from 13. Some of those scores might have been banked from years prior.
But are they taking the same curriculum?
They are taking.
Because that's what you're measuring. You're more than measuring the student, you're measuring the curriculum, right, and how effective it is.
You would be measuring that, part. I would also say that the students involved there might have, you know, you might have more kids who are advanced in a given grade, but I think, no matter what, the whole title of our goals, as we continue to do it, is that people need to grow, right? So what we would need to pretty much look at, too, is looking at where students were, you know, in previous courses, which is difficult when you get to keystones, because oftentimes you're going to have a break. Now, you have eighth graders who are taking eighth-grade PSSA, maybe at the same time they're taking Algebra I, Keystone. But a lot of times, you might have an eighth grader who takes the literature exam, doesn't take the next literature, the PSSA, English Language Arts, doesn't take the literature exam for the end of their 10th grade year. So it's kind of hard to measure, you know, the growth in between those couple of years. So I think the answer to that would be twofold. One, one thing we could take from this is that, yes, we're not comparing apples to apples, because these are different students, correct. But B, there's still, curriculum-wise, I think there's a trend that we can improve. One reason why I thought it was nice that Mr. O'Rourke did put that on there, if you look at the facts that on PSSAs, which were grades three to eight anyway, you saw this trend where we were 20% over the state in math and 20% roughly, roughly over in English Language Arts, which basically indicates that there's this gap in math across the state, too. So we are that much percentage better. I really believe this is an area where we can grow and work, though, and we have a lot of work to go, to do in and around mathematics. One of the biggest challenges, I think, when you looked at the dip in the score back then, and actually in that year, I don't believe they, they kind of gave you a little leeway on accountability that year, to be honest with you, because they saw when they shifted to the PA Core standards, the difficulty. So they kind of, the state did kind of give you a break, and it started from there. But one of the biggest issues, I think, in mathematics is really using higher-level reasoning and thinking skills, as well as being able to read mathematics. So it's not simple as just using the functions and the problems. It's actually deciphering through multi-step word problems and what functions you need to use. And now, instead of just having one correct answer, and some of us might remember from our testing, where you just eliminated ones that you knew couldn't be there, and then made your best educated guess sometimes on standardized testing, that's no longer going to work, because now many of the questions are asking you to explain those answers, and there's points for those. Some answers say there's more than, some questions, excuse me, have more than one right answer, so you have to pick two or three best. So it's difficult. It's a challenge, and it's something that I think is going to help students down the road possibly. I think Mr. O'Rourke did make a good point today, too, that as we review this data, we should always keep in our mind that it's a piece to the puzzle, that we want to measure and continue to show growth. But we also need to celebrate the fact that we are down at the STEAM showcase, and we're seeing students put these skills to use that they're going to use. So I think it's a total package, and these are data points.
The other thing is, too, Mr. Christensen, the keystone was relatively new in 2013. There was a shift in the types of questions that happened. If you remember, we had gone from the PSSA in 11th grade to then the keystone at the end-of-course test, and there was a shift, which then there was a question shift. I'll be honest with you, I've looked at the eligible content and the released items, but, you know, we're not permitted to actually look at the assessment in and of itself, but there was a shift in the types of questions that were offered from the beginning to now.
But even though we're 20% better, oh, roughly, just as we were 20% better in English Language Arts, I think math has a great deal of growth that's possible, and we really need to review and figure out both what we're doing within the class, but I think we also need to review what we are doing with regards to our remedial courses, and try to figure out what could we do better to help prepare and close that gap, because I think there's room there to be done. But to answer your question, to the best of my ability, if you look at this, you're dealing with different kids in different years, and so you'll see some trends where they didn't go up, and they went down, and they went up, and they went down. That's what I see there.
And then the final keystone is, I'm sorry, does somebody else have something?
I agree with Barry. The sample at the high school is about 1,500 students, and it should be fairly stable from year to year. The only question I have is, it's only going to be stable if the test is stable. So probably the best way to look at that would be to take the state average every year and see if we're maintaining the same difference with the state average.
And I would say that that's probably accurate to some degree across the board, when we're probably about 10 to 12% better than the state since the inception.
Yeah, I think your sample's the same. I mean, every year is a mix of kids from 11th grade, eighth grade, I mean, so your overall samples should be fairly similar.
Yeah, with a sample that large, it should be fairly consistent.
Yeah. I mean, there's some inconsistency, but I'm not sure if you're looking at the proficient and advanced amount.
I hope that, to tell you the truth, I think it's.
I mean, you got 50, 45, 40.
I think it's more.
58, 48. So there's a little move in the one grade, but for the most part, it seems like they are, they aren't.
So the next is the biology. And once again, you know, the, over, since 2013, the data indicates that we consistently stay above the state average, and it's basically that same percentage above the state average is between 10, 10 and 12% above the state average. So all in all, you know, as far as the achievement is concerned with Bethel Park, we continue to achieve well above the state average. Academically, our kids are well-prepared, our SAT scores, the other data points that you look at as we review those continue to be, continue to be high. Our merit scholars actually have grown in the past year, the number of merit scholars that we continue to do. So there's a lot of, a lot of very positive points that are happening academically for our students in Bethel Park. And as we talk about that, and as you look at those groups of students, that if you're going to group kids that are basic, proficient, below-basic, advanced, to be able to meet all of those needs in the classroom, and as we move forward, differentiation is such a key value in our classroom, and that goes along with our instructional practice that we've been focusing on in the last year with HAWK time and focusing more specifically with our least restrictive environment with our students. So Ms. Sutton and Ms. Wells are going to take it from here.
Thank you, Janet. Sorry about that. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm going to talk to you about HAWK time and our intervention in the elementary So what HAWK time is, is a schedule that provides 40 minutes daily of extra practice of math or English Language Arts skills. This happens in all five of our elementary schools. All students take part in the HAWK time, and the groups are flexible and based on data. Classroom teachers in their instructional blocks continue to personalize instruction for students during the traditional ELA and math blocks. They use best practices and corrective instruction to respond to the results of ongoing formative assessment, so they look at what their class is doing as a whole, and they adjust accordingly. The HAWK time period is an additional time where reading specialists, instructional support teachers, and grade-level classroom teachers regroup the grade-level students to further differentiate instruction and learning related to ELA and math. HAWK time is not a time when new instruction is taking place, this is a time when teams can be flexibly grouped, I'm sorry, when teams can flexibly group students based on their level of need. And this is fluid, so if we find that a student is achieving better than we had anticipated based on data, that child can immediately be moved to a different group the following time that we meet for ELA or math. So it's a very fluid activity. This slide is just for illustrative purposes, trying to explain how HAWK time works. I'm a visual learner, so I tried to put it, create a visual for you on how HAWK time works. In your classroom, you work on a certain set of essential standards, essential concepts, understandings, big ideas. And so for a certain time period, a classroom teacher would focus on those essential standards. Again, illustrative purposes, I picked three, just to pick three, and then I picked two and four, just, that's not necessarily the correct number, it's just to illustrate. And so during a set period of time, from September 11th to October 6th, teachers would focus on these standards in all of the classrooms in the elementary, and, you know, whoever taught the same grade level would focus on those. And they would be giving assessments and just tests, and looking to see how students were doing, and based on the outcome of those, during the HAWK time rotation from these dates, these same standards would be worked on in smaller group settings, with a reading specialist, instructional support teacher, and the classroom teachers. So those classroom students are divided into smaller groups, and then those standards are remediated or enriched. And then it continues during the classroom, the students are working on standards, and again, it's important to note that a lot of the standards are interconnected. But for illustrative purposes, I separated them by letters of the alphabet. And then those same standards, students would have the opportunity to be enriched or remediated during the HAWK time session. So student groups change every three to four weeks based on their performance and based on data. They are not stagnant. Students have the opportunity to change in ELA and in math, so their groupings are different for each subject area.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So when you're talking about the classroom standards, would those come from the curriculum that has been approved, like the Wonders Program? Would you look and see what standards they're going, the Wonders Program's going over, and then use those same standards then for HAWK time, the four weeks later, is that?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Yet the team of teachers, like everyone who teaches 4th grade decides these are the focus standards we're going to work on during this month's time. And then that's what they agree, because they all use the same assessments to group the kids.
So all grade levels wouldn't work on the same standards at the same time?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have a question. When they break into subgroups, are those subgroups within one particular classroom or are the subgroups taken across the whole grade?
They would be in all the content area teachers. So if there are three second-grade teachers, the three second-grade classroom teachers plus the reading specialist's location and the I S T, the instructional support teacher's location.
So all the second-grade students would be grouped regardless of which classroom they were in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
They would all be in one pool and then divided amongst the five folks.
Okay, I know the answer to this one, but for clarification, this would include kids from the low end of the spectrum to the high end of the spectrum?
All students, yes. During HAWK time, the instruction in HAWK time, this is not a repeat of the initial instruction, during the HAWK time sessions, students benefit from the opportunity to learn in a smaller group setting. They're in different classrooms with different teachers and different students. And teachers all have different learning styles. So students are exposed to a variety of ways of learning, practicing, and having enrichment on those standards and skills. While the students are grouped according to learning targets, small pieces of the standards, the focus of instruction continues to be one of best practices of student engagement and authentic tests. So I've had the opportunity to visit some classrooms during HAWK time. And the things that I have seen, I want to share with you personally, that the students in some of the HAWK time groups, one of the ways that they're really getting student interaction with mathematics, they're doing number line situations. They put tape on the floor and students start at a certain place. And they may pick a card where they have to either add or subtract. And they have to hop to that place to show their answer. And for first grade and second grade students, that's really great to get them out of their chairs and, you know, they're hoppy anyway. So it's really, it really utilizes things that they like. I have seen in other classrooms, planning of a vacation for a 4th grade classroom, a mathematics HAWK time lesson, where it incorporates research, technology. Students have to plan a vacation, they have to research a variety of vacation locations, flights, hotels, they have to budget on X number of dollars a day. And then they have to justify why they pick certain things to fit within the budget, a life skill for our students that they're already seeing in 4th grade. Students have writing opportunities, they have, one of the opportunities I want to share with you is an activity where students were, it is engaging and it is relative to them and maintaining the appropriate rigor for our students. They had the opportunity to read persuasive pieces on children making a difference in their community. And after reading that and working on speech standards and discussion standards and just what makes an article persuasive, so a lot of things happening there during that HAWK time session. The students came up with a book drive idea for Thanksgiving, this is currently going on, that students want to make a difference in the children's, children's hospital. So they are doing a book drive for the children at Children's Hospital. And so they sent this out to their families in this elementary school. And so I think it's wonderful to see our students at an early age embracing that community service aspect, coming out of a HAWK time persuasive reading activity. This brings us to the P S S A scores. You can see here, this is the 3rd grade 2017 data for the P S S A scores. Your English Language Arts are at the top and the mathematics are at the bottom. There's the little mouse. This was our 2016 score and here's our 2017 scores for the percentage of students who were proficient or advanced. The green indicates that we had an increase in the number of proficient and advanced students from last year. I'll leave that up there for a minute if you have any questions, just so you can see.
When you said that the student groups change every three to four weeks, do you mean they change when they, you move to new standards and so they mix them up again? Or do they change the teacher who teaches that group? Or how does it change?
We set a, a time period, so that at the end of the time period, the students then, they've learned a set of new standards in their classroom and there's a, some, a data point, that then they are grouped based on that chunk of standards from the classroom, because then those are the ones that are covered during the HAWK time session. So they all go back into the big pool and then they're divided into the five groups again, or however many there are.
And so do the instructors switch out over, switch to? Or do the, for example, the enrichment is always one person?
That's a building-by-building determination how they handle that. There are some, for the most part, what I saw the other day, there was a large group of students that really knew what they were doing and scored really well, so that they had two enrichment groups. So a second teacher became an enrichment. So it depends on the student need, they're very flexible to what the students need.
So here also, is the sample group the, the same year to year? So last year, were all these schools, did they have HAWK time implemented? So it's a, you know, even comparison? Like, there was HAWK time in all those schools? You know, when you see all these.
Yes, now, it was modified in that it started during the second nine weeks. Please correct me if I'm wrong, two days a week.
This, I mean, in, in 20.
Or 16, 17.
Yeah.
Correct.
So the answer to the question is, in, in, at, at the results for 2016, that'd be at the close of 16, there was not HAWK time.
Right. And it was in all schools at the end of 2017?
That's, yeah, we phased it in, as you may recall, throughout the 16.
Oh, elementary, oh, elementary schools.
Yeah. So, I mean, yes. So, so to answer your question, basically, you're looking at it and saying, I'm not saying HAWK time is the only reason why, by any stretch, I mean, but I do think that if you look at it, 16 was without it, 17 was with it. And also, I'd just like to take a moment to really look at and think, this is an entire, you know, staff, administration, you know, it was a transition in a lot of different ways. I, I really am proud of the staff and the work that they did. And I know sometimes change can be tough and challenging, but you could see that our staff will always do what's best for students and, and work hard. And you could see that out of these blocks, there's a significant amount of, of increase in 3rd grade. And we're going to get to 4th, which.
And our students, too. I give accolades to our students.
Parents.
Who worked hard.
Did third grade in 17 also have the Wonders program?
They did.
Okay.
Which was an excellent resource, as we might recall. So I think that was a good move to buy those then and pilot in the other, pilot in the other, from my perspective, anyway, because I think it allowed for, for additional resources that align to the P A Core.
The math program was the same, though, right?
It was.
We didn't switch the math.
We did not.
This slide shows the 4th grade data, again, for all five elementary schools. The areas that are green is a percent increase. I would like to point out just the data for William Penn, that that cohort of students that was in 4th grade in the 2017 year, that their proficiency and advanced level during the 2016 year while they were in 3rd grade was 76. So as a cohort, they did increase their proficiency and advanced levels, but I know that negative 11 might be startling, so I just wanted to address that.
And I would just repeat the same statements that I made with regards to 4th grade and the work there. It wasn't, you know, there's a lot of factors that go into things, but, you know, it was a good effort by students and staff and parents and administration.
Well, I, I know that we're always seeking to improve our academic performance and I'd like to congratulate you, Dr. Paschere. I know it wasn't all you, but it looks like you've implemented some changes and got the staff to buy into it. And it looks like we're moving in the right direction.
HAWK time allowed for an additional focus on essential standards. But teachers continue to diligently work to ensure that instruction is aligned to the grade-level standards and that all students have access to an achievement of these essential standards. Learning targets are determined by the teams of teachers and student results on formative assessments and tasks are being used to group students so that common misconceptions and errors can be addressed and extension opportunities are offered. All students are being met at their current level of understanding and all students are learning how to grow.
Just one more question on that slide. The, the, the numbers in, you know, in the E L A are fairly consistent across all the different schools, but William Penn really stands out. So is it the same curriculum there being taught? And, you know, any explanation why that data stands out?
Where were, where were you at on that?
The bottom row, compared to the other schools.
In math?
Yeah, if they're all teaching 4th grade math, why does that one stand out so much more? You know, all the other schools are kind of at the same level, but that one is significantly higher, like 20%.
I'm not sure if there's, but Ms. Sutton to point out that Penn has a lot lower of an enrollment to than the other schools. So each student is worth more in a percentage. You know, they only have roughly 40 students.
So that could go either way.
Per 4th grade, mm-hmm.
Good point. It could go either way, you know, you're, when you have a smaller population, it goes up higher or it has more tendency to move. To your point earlier about lots of kids in the high school with regards to one whole grade level, this is a smaller grade level by building. So it could go, it could go either way, it could swing either way, I guess. It's a fair statement.
Is, is there care taken when these students are grouped to not do the red bird, blue bird, black bird kind of?
That's important. Sure, that's very important. And so, yeah, so, I mean, I, I think.
I mean, you understand what I'm saying.
I understand exactly what you're saying. And I think our teachers do an excellent job of that. I mean, I haven't heard anything up to my level, I don't know if any of the administrators have, but I know the teachers really work hard to make sure everyone feels comfortable and try to mix those things up. That's something I've noticed. And just their, their work, their work ethic and the way they engage kids at different levels and try to make everyone feel, feel welcome and challenged and, and supported, I think is, is really important. So I understand your point. I think we're doing a pretty good job. Again, everyone can always improve, but I haven't heard anything with regards to that. And that's thanks to the teachers and their planning and preparation.
Well, if, if the groups actually do change every few weeks and there's a concerted effort to mix the kids up here and there, then it wouldn't, it shouldn't occur, but still, it should be a concern, I mean, a concern, it's.
Should be a factor.
Eyes wide open when it.
Sure. Yep.
Okay, my section of our presentation focuses on the vision of all learners grow related to least restrictive environment and improving student performance through access to grade-level appropriate content and standards. Now, I only have two slides, but I was going to give a little bit of background information before I show you the data. So obviously, tonight's presentation, as you see, is focusing on the recently released statewide assessment data of the P S S A. But I wanted to just point out a few things about students with disabilities. So, beginning in 1997, the I D E A, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Improvement Act, for the first time required that states include students with disabilities in state and district-wide assessments. So in the field of special education, there's some, there's a gap sometimes between what's expected at grade-level standards versus a student that might have an impact from their disability and might be functioning below grade level. But what we want to try to do is have that access to grade-level content and standards, which will help them to increase their performance. For students with disabilities, there's, there's also another assessment called the PASA, P A S A, which is the alternate state assessment, and that's given to 1% of a district students in a testing year. And just two more points, that with any assessment for students with disabilities, we must remember it's one assessment. So to create a more accurate picture, we want to look at multiple assessment measures. So for example, for a student, the most important would be their individual progress. And that would be something like data to give a more specific picture of a student's performance. So for example, if your son was reading 60 correct words per minute for reading fluency and by the end of the year, they got to 90 correct words per minute, that's really powerful information about their growth. But we're here tonight to look at statewide data. So what you're looking at here, and it's hard to read, oops, I shouldn't have done that. It's hard to read the key below, but blue means 2016, orange is 2017, and the gray is state. Okay, I'm not even leaning on it. Where, should I pick you up here? Okay. So on the bottom, what you're looking at is 3rd, 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. The first three bars are English Language Arts and then three bars for math for 3rd grade. So in that very first box, and you might see a line, demarcation between 3rd grade, what you're looking at is actual improvement from 16 to 17. And you'll see how much above the state averages we are. So it's a really proud thing there to see. Now, this is I E P subgroup. So the information that Ms. O'Rourke presented, students with I E Ps were also included in that information. This is called disaggregated. So you're pulling out just those students with I E Ps. And you'll see that's your percentage proficient and advanced. 4th grade looks very similar to 3rd grade. When you get into with, with the growth between the blue and the orange, and we're above the gray, which is the state, then you'll see some of our areas where we still need to work with the math. In the 5th grade, you'll see it's, we have a slight decrease in both math, in the 5th grade, 6th grade, 7th grade, and 8th grade. So that's one of the next steps, is we want to look at, some of your questions were about, you know, curriculum or supplemental materials. So we want to look at what can we do? Again, this is grade-level tests. There are allowable accommodations for students with I E Ps, but it is grade-level standards.
And looking at what's working in 3rd and 4th grade, which, and, and what could we do to modify that and, and make it continue to work and, and help our students grow in 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th? So that's something else that we could have a discussion on. Which I think some of that had to do with having access to grade-level standards, right? I think that was something that you mentioned. And I think that's important. As we know, trying to include the students in the regular education classroom and supporting them as such is not always the, the most appropriate, but when possible, it's our goal, right? And that's part of the least restrictive environment goal that the state's asking us to work towards. So I think we saw some improvement in 3rd and 4th. We're not seeing that in 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th at this point. So we need to revisit that and figure out what are we going to do and plan for future years to try to address that issue.
So can you list some things that are, you know, unique about 3rd and 4th? Is it the HAWK time? Is it, you know, what, what are some of the, the differences in terms of the curriculum and structure?
Yes, I think the two things that were already mentioned, also in Ms. Wells' presentation, the HAWK time is just one piece, but I'm going to explain, it doesn't replace special education, but it helps to get that reinforcement across classrooms. Also, with the WonderWorks and Wonders curriculum, I remember you all saw the tiered approach that that curriculum provides and looking at the standards and how to use those resources, you know, to meet the standard, I think is another big part of that. I think just some of our training efforts, looking at least restrictive environment, because one way to increase students' participation in the general ed classroom and curriculum, we've been really focusing hard on that with our vision and goals. Okay, so this performance data that you just saw does relate to least restrictive environment because to improve student performance, students need to have access to grade-level appropriate content and standards. So this, this phrase, least restrictive environment, it's a, a legal term from the Individuals with Disabilities Education Improvement Act, or I D E A. And it means that a student who has a disability should have the opportunity to be educated with what's called non-disabled peers. peers to the greatest extent possible. Now, that said, there still is a continuum of placement options. So, that's where it becomes somewhat confusing sometimes. But, having a continuum of placement options available is intended to ensure that a student with a disability is served in a setting where the student can be educated successfully in this concept of least restrictive environment. So, I tried to think of an analogy, this isn't a perfect one, but my daughter had injured her knee a few years ago. And so, if she had needed surgery right away, certainly she would have had surgery right away. But, what they try to do is do least intrusive measures, right? You might know somebody like this. So, they might try physical therapy or exercises at home, or she had to get a special, like, ointment through the pharmacist to try and different things. Now, it doesn't mean that students won't be in out-of-district settings. When I show you the data, there will be some students that need that and that's considered least restrictive for them. But, we want to compare ourselves to the state average of how many of our students are in the regular education classroom and curriculum, eighty percent or more. So, that's something that you'll see in the data. Just two other quick points, that Hawk Time is one way to reinforce the PA Corps standards, but does not take the place of specialized instruction through special education, gifted education, or even English as a second language instruction, or any kind of specialized instruction. There is still individualized specially-designed instruction provided in the special and gifted education, as well as differentiated instruction and flexible grouping within the classroom and also across the classrooms, which was the one question. And that's what the Hawk Time does is across classrooms, provides flexible grouping and differentiation in each building at the elementary level across grade level classrooms. So, the data that we're looking at here, it's very small from the back, I guess, but, so what you're looking at here is a comparison of 2015. And the reason why it's December first, that's called your December first child count and that's your most accurate data point. It's kind of like a snapshot in time of your data. So, the top two boxes are definitely solid data. The bottom row is tentative, I pulled it as a October first. Now, this December first will have definitive data, but this is pretty, pretty good. So, the red shows where we need to work on and the green shows that we are well within or well within where we need to be. So, the first call, well, the first column are the dates and you'll see we're comparing the district to the state. And then, an SPP target, we did not have available yet for 2016. And then, the next column, it says eighty percent or more. So, what that means is not every student with an IEP is going to be in the classroom eighty percent or more. But, what you're looking for is to have approximately sixty-three percent of your students with IEPs in the regular education environment, eighty percent or more. Hope that makes sense? And so, we're not meeting our target. And so, we have been having an improvement plan for LRE, actually, even before this last monitoring, this has been an area of need in the district. But, we are making growth. Now, I don't know if you could see it, so it's, we went up from fifty-five point four to fifty-six point three to fifty-eight point nine and we're looking at getting to sixty-three. So, we are in the right direction. Then, they compare less than forty percent in the regular education classroom and you'll see our percentages there are very good, four point oh, three point one, and two point oh. And then, other settings, and what you're looking for there is around eight point five and we're well under. And then, other settings means students that are in out-of-district placements, such as Pathfinder right down the road, maybe Wesley High School, Hay School, you know, different out-of-district placements. And there, you'll see that we are under state averages at four point five, four point oh, and currently, three point six. Tried to, that's a harder one to explain, this chart.
I think you did a nice job then. I think the key is, is that in order to get to where we need to be, we need to meet that target. And we're moving in the direction towards it, which is good, but we're not there yet. So, we have work to do. But, I think in order to do what's appropriate for children, we need to make sure that we have appropriate supports to help them be successful if you want them in there eighty percent of the time. And one of the things we're hoping, I'm hoping, before I speak for myself, is that items such as Hawk Time will help to benefit those students so that when they are in, whether they're in the regular education classroom or they're going to get the support built into the regular day. Hawk Time is also one that would count towards the eighty percent of their time with regular peers because that is a general ed piece of the schedule for the day. So, I, if you're going to set this expectation, you have to try to bridge that gap. The earlier you do that, the better off it's going to be for children. So, building that foundation and not allowing that gap to grow, providing scaffolding is important. And I think going back to Hawk Time, one, one point on that also was that it also provides an opportunity for all learners to grow because we're going to utilize flexible grouping and also offer enrichment activities and extensions for kids as well, which I think is important. So, that was what I wanted to say there.
Ms. Sutton?
Yes.
You said we're still working on the least request, excuse me, least restrictive environment and we're out of compliance on that. What is our, how compliant are we with the rest of the things with regard to the last cyclical monitoring report?
So, we did have items identified and they were all, all the corrective action was implemented and we did receive our closed letter in 2016. But, we still have that one remaining item with the eighty percent or more that we're continuing to work on.
So, everything else is in compliance?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Just so you know, on that eighty percent, and I know we're going to go to next steps here, on that eighty percent, keep in mind, as it should be, that's a team decision, right? So, we're going to get around the table and talk as a team as to what's appropriate. And so, it's not like you could just fix this by stating, nor should you, stating to students that you're just going to go in there. It has to be appropriate and it's a work in progress. So, that's something that I just wanted to make sure that people mention because somebody might think to themselves, well, why are you out of compliance? Just hit the sixty-three. It doesn't work that way and it shouldn't work that way because it's a team decision around the table and we have to make all parties feel that this is appropriate and the student's going to have success. So, a couple next steps, I guess, here, if you look at them, we're going to continue to analyze data and focus on math and algebra. Obviously, even though we are eighteen, nineteen, twenty percent above the average, just as we are in ELA, there's work to grow there. I definitely see that. I think we do. Expand remediation opportunities in other grade levels. One thing that you might, I always, I always say this, in elementary school, sometimes we're spending a lot of time and we're able to focus because the blocks of time are larger and they're not moving on a schedule much like a middle school, high school schedule where they only have so many minutes and they transition. We do have some remedial opportunities in place, but I think we need to evaluate those and talk about what we're doing in those at other grade levels and decide what strategies and interventions we can do to continue to try to help students show growth and work forward. And we need to continue to use data to inform instruction and remediation and enrichment. And you look at the data, there's some positives there, some things we're really proud of and proud of the staff, students, and parents. And there's some things that there's work left to do and I think that's always the case. So, I think we need to continue as an administrative team and staff, work together to figure out what are the next steps to continue to try to close that achievement gap. And I'm just going to reiterate, I think, what Ms. O'Rourke said earlier, I think it's important, and, and the others, that this is a snapshot and one data point. I think Ms. Sutton shared that. You can't go solely on this, nor do we want to. We want to celebrate some success there, but it's something that we do measure ourselves by. But, also, we need to look at things like the STEAM Expo today where we saw our students excel there as well. So, there's a lot that goes into a child's education and the whole child to learn and grow, but this was our review. Were there any other questions for me?
So, we had, we were in a STEAM Expo today?
We were.
How was it?
It was awesome. Learned a lot of things, a lot of great things going around the county. What they did is invite, I believe they invited a majority, if not all, of the folks who received the grants and our middle school received the grant?
It's from my middle, my middle school.
Our middle school did, yes. And so, if you've visited the middle school for the Steel City Collaborative area there, alongside the library, there's a lot of interesting things there that our students are performing on. One really interesting point was they worked on a lot of different things, but one thing they presented, am I still on the show there, Vicky, or, oh, I'm sorry? I thought, I don't want, if they're going to come and say that, I don't want to, are we going to have something on that? Are we?
We'll have to ask.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll let them share and maybe their write-up will be better, but I liked all of the events. One thing really looked at aerodynamics of building a car, another thing looked at weight that a bridge can hold and how do you build it? And everyone had the same basic popsicle, sticks, and glue. And one of them held, and I might be off, but two hundred plus pounds? I mean, it's, that's impressive, I mean, when you see the materials. So, you know, other people just recycling and utilizing our Chromebook screens that might have broken, putting use to them in a good way to provide light. And I think something around biomes and talking about how, you know, using our science units and how animals can survive in different habitats and such. It was an excellent experience and I think the kids got to see other things that were going on as well as presenting. And, yeah, our students were interviewed by the newspaper and such and I think that was a great experience and very proud. A lot of people came up to me, why, not only are they excellent projects, but just the way they handle themselves and present. So, it's a great reflection. So, we're looking for a total package of student and not just this only snapshot of data, but we can't ignore this and use this to help guide our instruction.
Well, we always get this and have this report about this time of year because this is when the PSSAs and the keystones come out and it's, it's the time when we take a look at all of that information. And I was, I was impressed with how well our elementaries by and large did, that especially a couple of those that I think have our lower socioeconomic students made yeoman's progress.
Worked very hard.
So, I think everybody deserves a pat on the back from the parents and the students, especially working hard to the staff and, and administration, for sure. I need a motion to adopt the agenda for business items.
Still moved?
Second.
Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the business meeting of September nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, and the regular meeting of September twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen.
Still moved.
Second.
Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven, zero. I need to announce executive sessions held October seventeenth, two thousand seventeen for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information, and October twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Are we doing a staff report tonight?
Wow, you guys are doing double duty tonight.
Yeah, speaking of, you get to hear more of my voice, isn't that lucky for everyone? And I get to share more of the extraordinary things that our kids and staff are doing. It's my pleasure to share with you the...